All right, good evening. It is 7 o'clock on September 28, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. A note for the record, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. A note for the record that in attendance tonight, the meeting of this meeting board members are myself, Chair William Ramsey, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Mr. Fisher is attending remotely this evening. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda, our approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes tonight. Liz, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Joe, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
Great, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 14, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider reserve fund transfer request for audit services. Sue, good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm not there, but...
That's okay. Go ahead.
Just for everybody's just general purposes, this is our first reserve fund transfer for FY '23. Our reserve fund budget for '23 is $709,291. This request is for $12,000 for our audit of FY '22. And what happened was during our audit, we have what's called a uniform guidance audit, which formerly was a single audit. And any federal grant of $750,000 or more requires that grant to be audited. Due to the pandemic and the federal money that came in from APA and from FEMA, those two grants went over the $750,000 threshold and had to be audited. The audit firm charges $6,000 per grant, so instead of one grant for $6,000, we now have to have three grants audited at $18,000. We only budgeted for six, so I am asking for a reserve fund transfer for 12 to cover the other two grants.
Sue, thank you. Michelle, Tom, do you want to add anything?
No, that was a good explanation.
Great.
Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
I'm giving, what type of audit is this? Because I know there are various types of audits.
It is a uniform guidance audit. It is for federal grants only. The grants that they did set was for school lunch and then APA and FEMA. It's more of a fraud risk assessment, grant audit. It is required by federal government.
Do we receive an audit letter, an opinion letter, once the audit's concluded?
Yes, you do. You got the single audit, yes.
Great.
It's part of the package that we get to assemble.
Okay. No other questions. Thank you.
Liz.
Well...
Sorry, Liz.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue, for explaining that. I did review it earlier with Michelle, and you answered some of the questions that I posed earlier. So thank you about this being the first transfer and just to remind people the balance that we have in this fund. And just one other note, too, we should budget for this next year if we think we're going to have multiple audits, right? We likely will.
Yes, I think we will update audits because we are getting APA and FEMA money again for FY '23.
Right, okay. Great, thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comment? Seen none, I take a motion.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to Town Accountant Audit Services in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item? Thank you, Sue. Good seeing you. Have a good evening.
You, sir.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the request of Packaging Center Incorporated Doing Business as Stop &amp; Shop, 400 Lincoln Street, Hingham, for a change of manager. I believe we have with us this evening Attorney Gene Richard or maybe Mr. Michael Ferante?
I'm Michael Ferante.
Mr. Ferante, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Why don't you come up to the mic, sir? If you could just state your name and address for the record or name and position would be great.
Good evening. My name is Michael Ferante. I'm the store manager at Stop &amp; Shop in Hingham. I reside in Rockland.
Just tell us a little about the application or what the change is.
Yes, the previous manager that was there before, Kevin Lee, is on the certificate now. I came in May, and I hope to stay for a long time, so we're going through this transition right now.
Great. Would you like a counsel to speak at all? Being an attorney, I know that some... I know we get paid by the hour, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you want your counsel to speak at all or do you need to?
If anything is need to be said, sure.
Counsel, would you like to add anything to the presentation?
I do, but my associate was planning to do this, and he says he can't unmute.
We'll get him there.
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, members of the board. Sam Richard, Attorney for Stop &amp; Shop. As you're aware, Mr. Ferante and Gene Richard are here with me. Just wanted to give a little information about Mr. Ferante's background. He's been with Stop &amp; Shop for the past 40 years, experienced manager for the past six, as well as district director for the Boston area for eight years prior to that. He has been the manager at Hingham since May, and is knowledgeable with all bases of store operations, including alcohol sales, having undergone Stop &amp; Shop training for alcohol sales. And, you know, we respectfully request the board's approval for him as the new premises manager.
Counsel, thank you very much. I know that we do have the benefit of the police chief on the line tonight, and as we do with anything related to alcohol sales, we do just ask him if he's reviewed the application and if he has any concerns or comments. Chief, any anything from you?
Good evening, Bill. Now I've reviewed the application, and we have no issues from my standpoint on the application.
Thank you very much. Liz, any questions?
No questions. The application looks complete. I saw the Cory approval, so no questions.
Joe, any questions or concerns?
Oh, this is a complete application, no questions.
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, seen none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Packaging Center Incorporated Doing Business as Stop &amp; Shop, 400 Lincoln Street, Hingham, for a change of manager from Kevin James Lee to Michael Ferante in accordance with the application for change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on September 9, 2022, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Sir, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
That's good luck, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Zalus Beer Company, LLC for the Fall Fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, October 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I believe we have Jeff Pedder on the line tonight. Jeff, where are you? How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
My car, sorry about that.
That's okay, no problem. Tell us about your application.
We have applied for a one-day license. We're at a farm. We maybe put the event on, it's the Fall Fest, or they put the events on like one per year. We have done an event at all river farm, maybe 10 times at this point. So we've done it about 10 times. Could you hear me? I'm just checking.
We can hear you okay. Yeah, you're coming in.
Okay, so we've done it about 10 different times. We basically turn up, we have a tent, we usually bring tap, a can, and we serve to members of the public who come to this A4 event. It's usually quite a popular event, people of Hingham, I think. And yet, everyone who serves is TIPS certified. I will read myself, we like Christi, and those records are, count as own information. The event's ten to five. Any questions?
About how many people do you anticipate attending the event?
I got an email, and they said they sold 500 tickets so far. I think they're hoping for 1,000. Obviously, they're not all booked one time. We're also not the only beer event, there are two other ones, this Pepsi and something called Wagon.
Yep, familiar with that. That's a big event. Okay. All right, Chief, I anticipate probably a detail probably associated with this event.
Yeah, so they've had a detail in the past when they've had this event, and it's like you had mentioned, it is a repeat event. They've held it in the past. I reviewed this application, no issues with it at all. My only request is that you have a police detail on the event to know the people.
Thanks very much. Joe, any questions or concerns?
So I just want to be clear that traffic and parking, both of those are, have been handled for this event?
I... Good evening, Joe. They normally have the parking on their property, the fill-ups will assist, directing people in whatever it fills up to and other so on, impact any of the neighborhoods.
Okay, great. And in for past years, have we received complaints from others?
We've had none, least apart that I'm aware of. It does, I'm not sure if there's been any issues at all at any events they've held there.
Okay. And one final question, what's the correct way to pronounce the name of the beer company?
Zalus, it has a long key.
Zalus, got it. No other questions, thank you.
Liz.
No other questions, thank you.
Anybody from the public have any questions? All right, seen none, I take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Zalus Beer Company, LLC for the Fall Fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, Cover 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. All right, Jeff, good luck with your event.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing, LLC for the Fall Fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, October 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I do see Dino Fenari on the line, because Vitamin C, obviously. Dino, how are you tonight?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good to see you. Do you want to tell us about your event?
Absolutely. So again, this event is put on by the trustees at Weir River Farm at 150 Turkey Hill Lane for the hours of 10 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 1. It's a family event. There'll be farm animals and ice cream and different food and beverage options and some live music, and it should be a really, really nice event. Again, we've done this in the past with the trustees, both at Weir River Farm and as well at World's End. So we'll have our beer truck there, dispensing beer and seltzer for the crowd, which I guess sounds a little bit less than what the trustees had anticipated, so hopefully they get a nice run on ticket sales here. It looks like it's going to be a nice day on Saturday, so.
Great, well, Dino, I know, I always know you are a part of great events, so I have no questions for you. Well, let me see if my colleagues do. Liz.
Just want to confirm with Chief Jones that the application is complete.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. I've reviewed this one as well. This is also no issues with the issuance of it.
Okay, great. No other questions, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
No questions. Application looks complete.
Do any members of the public have any questions? Sir, do you have a question? Come up to the microphone and just state your name.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, come up and state your name and address.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I am Dick Orr, 156 Shipyard Drive. All it is, I just wanted to say those events have just been terrific. I've taken the grandkids in the past, and I look like a hero when I take the kids, because it's really a lot of fun and very well-run, too, so.
Excellent, Mr. Orr, thank you for your comment. Appreciate that, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the Fall Fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, October 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Dino, good luck with your event. Good to see you as always.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Tapped Beer Truck for an office event at DTM Packaging to be held at 150 Industrial Park Drive on Thursday, October 5, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I believe we have Mr. Eric Arbach on the line. Eric.
Good evening, friend.
Good evening to you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you all so much for taking the time. Appreciate the time.
Just kind of state your name and position, tell us about your application.
Yeah, my name's Eric Arbach. I'm a director of business development for Tapped Beer Truck. We are a bulk catering company that has been hired by the company for an event on the 5th from 3:00 to 6:00 for about 35 to 45 people. The event is prepaid, and so we will have selling out on site, so we'll be ordering wine and beer. And otherwise, it's strictly for the employees, so no outsiders or anyone outside the company will be allowed in or allowed to the area, in their parking lot. Got it.
So Eric, how many participants do you anticipate attending?
35 to 45.
Oh, okay, smaller size. All right. And so Tapped Beer Truck, so it's like a mobile beer truck with kegs in it? Is that what it is?
Correct, yeah. So we have a vehicle with kind of a custom tap system, so we just kind of connect the kegs in to the vehicle content. We have two TIPS certified bartenders that will be pouring, so we just kind of have the truck pull up, and then they're in front of it, and then a table in front of them, and the cups, and the wine, et cetera. People can just come up and get some drinks.
Chief, any concerns?
Evening again. No concerns at all. If you review the applications on private property, everyone's TIPS certified is going to be working the event, so no issue at all with the application.
Thanks very much. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
No questions. Let's complete.
Any questions for the public? Okay, with that, I take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Tapped Beer Truck for an office event at DTM Packaging to be held at 150 Recreation Park Drive on Thursday, October 5, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Eric, good luck with your event.
Thank you so much again. Appreciate all your time this evening.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lena's Bartending and Catering for a 50th high school reunion to be held at the Bear Cove Fire Museum on Sunday, October 9, 2022, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. We have Jerry Duff here. Jerry.
Geraldine is my official name.
Ah, okay, Jerry. Well, obviously, we know you're Jerry, but... Good to see you. Just tell us about your event and tell us about what you want to do.
The Hingham High School class of 1971 graduated with 388 students, the largest class to graduate Hingham High. Because of COVID, we missed a year, so now we're having our 50th reunion. Friday night, we're going to be at the Beth. Saturday night, we're going to be at the Country Club. And Sunday, we're going to be at the Bear Cove Fire Museum, and we're going to, we've hired a full-service caterer called Grill 41, who will be feeding us hot dogs, hamburgers, and pulled pork sandwiches, I think. And we want to sit and visit quietly without the music from the Country Club. And it's by ticket only. It's only class members and their spouses, and we hope to have 50 people that have signed up show up. There's a lot of concern about COVID.
Yeah.
One of the reasons we like the space is because we can open all the doors in the museum and have an airy space. The caterer himself will be bringing a pop-up to cover the food service, which will be outside.
Great.
Oh, and the bartender, he recommended, he's had excellent, he's worked with in the past, and recommended her highly.
Great. Let me ask, so Chief, any concerns with the application?
Evening again. Likewise with this one, I have no concerns. I've reviewed the application, it's complete, and no issues.
Great. Tom, any concerns?
No concerns, no.
Fantastic. Well, that's all, that's great, and I know you and Mark do so much for the museum, so thank you for all you do, and I think it's a wonderful venue, and congratulations to your class on 50 years.
Thank you, thank you. It's a good group of people.
Yeah, sounds like a great weekend.
It is. We're going to be so tired of seeing each other. Please, have them all go back to Indianapolis.
That's great. Well, I hope you guys...
Thank you very much.
Hope you enjoy, have a great... Oh, we got to take the vote, we have to take the vote. But let me ask Liz if she has any questions here.
So Chief Jones says the application is complete. I'm assuming we have the TIPS certification, if we need it, from Lena's?
Yes, true. Yeah, that's correct. They have TIPS certifications of bartenders.
Okay, okay, excellent. No questions, sounds fun.
Joe, any questions?
No questions. Let's complete.
All right, any members of the public have any questions? Seen none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lena's Bartending and Catering for a 50th high school reunion to be held at the Bear Cove Fire Museum on Sunday, October 9, 2022, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously, so have a great event, Jerry.
Oh, I forgot to tell you, afterwards, we're going to the Beach House for ice cream.
Maybe I'll see you down there.
Fun weekend, enjoy.
Enjoy. Good seeing you. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Night at the Old Ordinary for Saturday, October 15, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And we have Sarah Doggett here to present on behalf of the society. So Sarah, come on up here and just state your name and position and tell us a little about the event. I'm familiar with it, but for our viewing audience, so.
Hi, I'm Sarah Doggett. I'm the Assistant Director of the Hingham Historical Society and a Hingham resident. So we are getting ready to plan our, or plan, we are well underway with our planning of the Fourth Annual Tavern Night, which will take place at Old Ordinary, 21 Lincoln Street. And we will have all alcohol served, we have all TIPS certified, and it is one of our largest fundraisers, fundraisers, excuse me, that we have. We have an open-air tent on the, over the driveway. We are working with the Board of Health on any food permitting and all of that, and we're looking forward to having a great evening. And we've applied our application, again, with all the TIPS certification listed on it as well. We've reached out about a police detail, and we're told to call back October 13, and all the final details will be made then to assign someone for the police detail also.
So I've attended the event every year. I've already bought my tickets for this year.
Great.
I bought them as soon as the tickets went on sale. I will tell the public, these tickets sell out quicker than a Bruce Springsteen show.
Thank you for your push.
They already sold out already?
They are getting very close, so run, don't walk.
It's a really wonderful night, so, you know, you, Deirdre, the entire staff does a really great job with it. There's tours of the Old Ordinary.
Yes.
The militia participates.
Yes, our militia participates.
It's really, it's really well-done, and if you haven't gone, it's a really fun evening, and the weather's been great the last couple of years. So if you're looking for a fun night to do, I really highly recommend it, so, like I said, I have my tickets already bought for this year, so it's good, so.
Oh, good, well, thank you for your support.
So I have no questions, and it's, yeah, it's really well-organized, well-run. Chief, any questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns with this, Lena.
Great. All right, Liz, any questions?
No questions or concerns, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
I do have a question. So am I correct that the Old Nor, Old Ordinary was also a drink, that people could get a drink in the town room there?
Absolutely, yes. It was a halfway point between Plymouth and Boston to come, and you could have an ordinary meal and a cider or a beer.
So you're returning to your roots by having this event.
We are. We are celebrating it with our community and helping to preserve our properties along the way with the fundraising efforts.
Absolutely, a wonderful event. I've got no objections or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is, the Old Ordinary used to be famous for a drink they would serve called the Colonial Flip, and on Lincoln Day every year, my wife makes the Colonial Flip. And it's an interesting drink. But those interested in our town's history, you should try it. It's an egg, and O'Leal, and rum. It's not the greatest tasting drink, but it's interesting.
Does the trick.
We do do it. It's Lincoln Day every year. We make it. Yeah, so anyway, it's a story for maybe after the meeting, but we do try it every year, trying to make it better. Okay, and any members of the public have any questions or comments about this application?
Okay, with that, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Night at the Old Ordinary on Saturday, October 15, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor by roll call. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Sarah, good luck with the event. I'll see you there.
Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the lease agreement with Richard Orr doing business as J.F. Orr &amp; Sons for Eight Short Street. Mr. Orr, good to see you again. Come up, Mike, and just again state your name and address.
Thank you, yes. Dick Orr, 156 Shipyard Drive, and I am the tenant at Eight Short Street.
Great. And you're interested in renewing your lease again, correct?
Very much, yes.
All right, fantastic. I know we've had this lease agreement for a couple of years now, correct?
Yes, I've, it's been over 10 years now I've been in there, and it's worked out really well for me, so.
Yeah, and I am in, talking with Tom, it's worked out well for the town as well, so it's been a good agreement. Tom, do you want to walk us through? When we turn it over to Johnny Coffin?
Sure. Yeah, I can touch on it. John is here for questions, if we have them. So Dick has been a tenant for a number of years. We did a new RFP this year. Dick was the sole applicant for the property. We've set up a lease, as we have in years past, where he'll be paying us a base rent in addition to work done at the property. This is an attempt at maintaining an old historic property in town. Dick is clearly a qualified woodworker, and to the extent we can capitalize on those skills to maintain our historic structure, we wanted to try to get creative with this lease, and that's what we've done here. We are confident that the value of what we'll be getting from the woodworking is added to, when added to his monthly lease, is in keeping with the, with the going rate for such properties. So with that said, I would say we've never had any problems with Dick. He's a wonderful tenant, very polite, always smiling when I go over to say hi, so, no, I love having Dick in there, and he's always on time with his payments, and there's never been a problem.
Great. I've reviewed the lease. I don't have any questions. Liz, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions. Just, you know, for kind of the public's purpose, just to understand that it is a lease agreement with a monthly payment, plus there are a number of tasks, maintenance tasks, that we're asking Mr. Orr to do. So thank you for preserving the building so well.
Oh, thank you.
But no questions or concerns.
I forgot to say, I could speak to some of the items that we're going to ask him to do. Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, I would, if you don't mind, so the pub, so the public has a better understanding of the relationship. And I know Mr. Orr has made some improvements to the building, which we, which we appreciate, so that's, that's great, if you don't mind.
Sure. So things he's been done and has done and will be doing, he's restored the windows there. He'll restored the vehicle doors at the front of the building. He's built interior cabinets, installed and painted a wood floor, removed old electrical wires that have been outside the building and relocated them inside, replaced the toilet, replaced the flange on the sewer pipe, installed a new septic, a new septic system, and installed a new burner on the boiler. So he's, again, he's helping us maintain that property as much as he is occupying it, so.
It, I just, I might say that it's a bit unusual, I think. I'm a furniture maker, and that building works out very well for me. Logistically, I have about 1,200 feet in there, and it's myself normally, only I'm hardly high production or anything. And of course, the historical ambience of the property is, works out so well for me. And, but also the fact that I'm not in a industrial drive or something, more of a commercial enterprise, rather, it's very much also a retail operation in the sense that I don't have a lot of people, but I have maybe two to three visitors per day. And they're always effusive with compliments, of course, about the building and so forth. So that's very good for me, but my point only is that, yes, it's very much in my interest to, to try to maintain the building, because that's my, that's my brand, so to speak, where I am now.
Well, we definitely appreciate the capital improvements to the building. It's, they're needed, so thank you. Anything, do you have any?
No other questions. Thank you.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I just want to be clear, clear on the payments. In addition to rent, are, are there additional payments such as for utilities or taxes?
I, I pay property taxes then to the town on the, on the building. And then I also cover all of the utilities, as well as I, the insurance on the property for the benefit of the town.
Yeah, I, I saw those. I have my lease. That's, that's right. So I, I bet no, no other questions. And thank you for maintaining the structure. That's great.
Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the lease agreement with Richard Orr doing business as J.F. Orr &amp; Sons for Eight Short Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, in the form attached here too.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Mr. Orr, thank you.
Muchos gracias.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks, Dick.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a debt exclusion ballot questions for the Foster School and Public Safety Facility project. I think Michelle's going to take the lead on this one.
Sure. Thank you, Bill. So at last week's, last week's meeting, when we were talking about the special town meeting and the ballot questions, we just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying the ballot questions on the November 8th state election ballot. So first, this slide is just showing everyone where they will physically be on our ballot. So we are not doing a separate town election for these questions. The two questions on Foster and the Public Safety Facility will be on the back of the state ballot that everyone gets when they're voting on November 8th or earlier, if they're doing early voting. So you can see here from the picture, we are on the back and we are questions five and six. So we want to make sure that anyone who is, who would like to make a decision about these projects knows to go to the back of the ballot and kind of answer all the questions, including five and six. So we'll put this out in some materials as we get closer and make sure folks know where to find it. But in speaking with the town clerk, when we did a debt exclusion question earlier this year for the pool project, Carol reported that a lot of people at the polls were confused about the wording of the question itself. And the two questions that we've put on the ballot for November 8th, they have to follow language that the state prescribes us to use. So you can see the ballot question here, and it talks about, shall the town of Hingham be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2? And it goes on. And a lot of folks get tripped, tripped up on this. So if they say, I want to build the building, do I vote yes or no? Do I want to exclude it or not exclude it? So we do want to clarify for both of these questions that a yes vote will allow the town to borrow funds and raise taxes for the elementary school or for the Public Safety Facility school. So yes builds the building. And a no vote means that the town is not authorized to borrow funds or raise taxes to build the buildings. And so again, we'll, we'll put some information together. We were, unlike the state, we are not able to actually publish information on the ballot itself next to our questions explaining what a yes and no vote is. So we'll put materials out ahead of time, and we'll make sure that the town clerk and all of her election workers have information to be able to just help folks understand the questions that's asked when they're going to make their decision. Any questions on this?
I'm sorry, can you go back to the, the actual ballot questions again?
Over here, you mean?
Yeah, so can you, can you, can you, so what are they actually, what do they actually look like? I'm just trying to see what they?
This, I didn't make this to really, um.
Yeah, you can't, okay.
The text, the text is right here.
The box and the text is what they?
That's the actual question that's printed.
But the, the wording underneath will not be there.
That's correct.
It would just say, it would, so it will be a bubble yes, a bubble no.
That's right.
Okay, got it, okay.
So the main point, and because the questions were kind of confusing about exempting stuff from Prop 2 and 1/2, the main point is vote yes if you want to build the buildings and vote no if you don't.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure, so it's clear for voters, what a yes vote means, what a no vote mean. But this is, this is helpful.
I think what the state's getting at here is Prop 2 and, Proposition 2 and 1/2 caps how much we can raise taxes each year. So they're basically saying, do you want to not include this project in this cap and raise taxes above that amount to build the project? But it's sort of written in the most confusing way possible.
Yeah, and I know we're going to get this on, I, I just want voters to be educated to what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, so they understand when they, when they decide whether they vote no, whether they vote yes, they understand what exactly they're voting for when they cast their, their ballot.
Right, and the vote?
Yeah, because it, because it could be confusing if you go in and say, what does yes, what does no mean? So this is, this is actually good we went over this. And we're going to push this out on our social media to best educate people to the extent possible what these votes actually mean going forward. Okay.
Right, and the vote does two things. The yes vote allows the town to borrow the funds and raise the taxes to pay back those funds as we build the project.
Liz, you have any questions?
No questions, but thank you, Michelle, for doing this. I think it's important that we just start getting people familiar and comfortable with this, this language, because it is not plain English by any means. And another thing to just notice for people is there won't be a dollar amount in the question. So that information, we've been talking about all along, and we'll continue to talk about it, but don't be thrown by that, that it can't have the dollar number in the question. And just one other note for people that are voting early by mail, please do still turn it over and, and answer these questions, even if you vote before town meeting on November 1st. These questions are still important and still valid.
Great. Joe, any questions?
Sorry, I did the right, I was muted there. No questions on the ballot. I do have some questions on the procedure. What happens if someone doesn't respond? I mean, they don't turn it over, they don't look, so they don't vote on this, these questions. How does that count in terms of whether or not the town can proceed?
The town just, and John's here as well, but the town needs a majority, a majority vote for this to be approved on the ballot. I believe you, you answer whichever questions on the ballot that you would like to answer, and those votes are counted per each question. But if you don't, if you choose not to vote on the entire backside, it's not that your ballot is, is somehow invalidated.
But if it's blank, it doesn't count as a yes or a no.
John should answer.
Right?
I believe that's correct, but I defer to John.
Joe, that's, that's my understanding is a blank ballot is not counted, a yes or a no, you need a majority if it was actually cast.
Oh, right. So, so is the majority of those who vote on this question not a majority of those who vote on the, at the, at the time of the election? Okay, because that's, that's, there aren't going to be some people who either don't understand or don't turn it over. Is there an opportunity, I think I know the answer, but just to be clear, is there an opportunity for someone who wants to support this, but thinks that the dollar amount's just a little too high, so they somehow want to vote on the ballot that they approve, but they're, they're only voting for X amount of dollars? Is there any way to do that? No, I, I don't believe so either. So we need to communicate to folks that if they want to proceed, they need to vote yes on this. If they don't, it's a no. It's not subject to, to modification.
It's a yes or a no.
Right. And as Liz and Michelle put it out, this is on the ballot whether or not the town meeting approves. Will there be communication at the ballot box as to how town meeting voted? I mean, those of us who are active in town government just assume everyone knows, but someone they walk in and they have no idea how town meeting voted. Will there be that communication at, at the location of the ballot?
I don't know the answer to that, Joe. I'll check with Carol tomorrow. I think if, if town meeting does not vote, then this ballot becomes irrelevant. So whether there'll be communication at the ballot to say, no need to answer those questions.
Right. Okay, or, you know, so if town meeting does not approve or approves only one, you know, that people, I think, should be informed that it may affect how they, how they vote. And, you know, it becomes a little more important that they walk in and know that town meeting has approved this, so that we, this is just the final step. So we, we need to work with those areas of communication. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, our appointments. I believe we have two appointments this evening. So Liz, would you like to take the first one?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Lucinda King-Frode as a registrar for the town of Hingham to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. I would make a motion to appoint Tom Hoffman to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor, favored by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Coach Hoffy. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will turn to Town Administrator Select Board reports. Michelle, do you have anything this evening?
One item. So a reminder from our town clerk's office, that to participate in the Tuesday, November 1st special town meeting, you have to be a registered voter in Hingham. And so the last day to register to vote ahead of that meeting is October 22nd. So we'll be putting out some messaging just to remind folks of some of these deadlines, but.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, just a quick, a quick note. So you, Bill, Liz, and I had the pleasure this morning of attending a brief award ceremony down in the Police Department at their shift change. I wanted to give a quick shout-out to Sergeant Smith, Detective Javazi, Officer Handrichan, Sergeant Lucas, Officer Dan Goldstein, Officer Rockoff, and Officer Navu, who received, who received accommodations from the chief and from the, the.
VFW.
The VFW, thank you. And, you know, I've been now to a few of these, and it never ceases to amaze me, the bravery and heroism of our men and women in our public safety departments. These were awards that were handed out for life-saving measures, not for showing up every day and, you know, just kind of driving around, right? These folks are out saving lives on a daily basis. So kudos to them. Thank them for everything that they do. Chief, you run a fantastic department. You have excellent officers, men and women that work for you. I hope you're proud. I know I am. And, and look forward to the next one.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Appreciate the support of the Select Board and, and your office as well. Like you said, these are, like, they're the best awards that these officers got. You know, it's not something that, that everyone is aware of, that these officers are involved in. It's nice to let them get some, some recognition for this. So it was great for VFW to step forward and for your office and the board to participate.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, Joe, any, anything to report tonight or any updates?
No, I, sorry, I was not able to attend the ceremony this morning. I am out in Steep Oak Springs, Colorado. So that would have been a long commute. But I look forward to being with all of you at our meeting next week.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Liz?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Just want to put out that we, we are going to continue our office hours. We had, we started that last week. We will continue that this week. So that, that's continuing. I think we're going to continue that throughout the, the month, up through November. I also want to put out that a lot going on in town right now. Fall's picking up, a lot of good, great sports activities going on in town, lots going on. There's a Foster PTO at Paragon on Friday evening. Please come out and support the PTO. I had the pleasure of attending the high school homecoming on Saturday. I know Liz was there. Thank you for the great pictures of my children on the field, which was really nice of you. Thank you for doing that, Liz. And it was just a really great day at the high school. I know a lot of the athletic teams won, and there was a dance that evening, but it just reminded me what a great, great town we live in, so much going on, so many great things. So anyway, I hope everybody has a great week. We're going to meet on Thursday night next week because of the, the Jewish holidays. So we will see you on Thursday night next week. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.